We'll reconvene now in open session and I want to welcome everyone to the Amory Board of Education on today's meeting. And the first thing they're going to have is our spotlight on education and we're going to welcome our state champion wrestling team if they want to come on in.
All right, actually, we'll just right in line here. So we'll stop right here because we're on the video, all right?
Yeah, I suppose we can't come to that. People can come back, you know, some people can file back in here, fill back in the hole.
Don't you grab it? Oh, there, there, okay.
Okay, I'm just gonna have you stand over here just a tad, okay. Check, check, all right, we're good. All right, we just wanted to recognize our 2022 team state champs. And I'd like to start with Coach Kelly is not late. Coach Kelly actually has a wrestling camp tonight over at the high school, so wrestling never stops. So he's got thirty kids in the wrestling room from all different communities getting after it tonight. These guys are back-to-back state champs in any team sport. That's very difficult to do. I know we presented in front of the board last year, but whenever you're looking at repeating in a state team competition, that is tough. So very impressive, a very accomplished group individually and as a team. These guys traveled all over the state of Wisconsin and even into Illinois this year. We went to Kokona, Kimberly, Freedom, to the Dvorak and Harlem High School, I believe, in Illinois. They racked up some hotel points this year, spent a lot of nights in hotels and trying to find their next meal and whatnot. So, and we did that because we knew we had a prestigious group here and we wanted to find them some competition. Some of these guys have more losses than they normally would have in a year simply because we went out and found the best possible competition. Individually, we had four individual conference champs, we had nine sectional qualifiers, we had nine state qualifiers. So all of our nine individuals who qualified for sectionals made it to state. We had two state champs, we had Robert Beasy and Koi Hopkey. If Robert's not here, but if he was, Andy was gonna demonstrate a double take-down on him for everybody.
I already have like fifty pounds on him, but I don't think I could take him.
We had two runner-ups, Eddie Symes and Cale Hopkey, and we had three guys that placed wide, Ingham, Lane Anderson, and Grant Cook. That all took place at the individual state tournament. And then on the team side of things, we had a stack regional. We had three ranked teams in our regional, we came out on top there. That was a huge win for us as a team. We went to sectionals, we beat Northwestern and West Salem, and then down in Madison again for the second straight week, we beat Prairie Duchene. We were down, was it twenty-six-nothing, twenty-eight-nothing, something like that, but we turned it around and got the win in semifinals and then we beat Lancaster in the finals. So, a heck of a year for these guys, both individually and as a team. Can't fake their work ethic enough. You know, a lot of these guys were in the weight room this morning or after school, you know, they're working out year-round, playing multiple sports, and our coaching staff, Coach Kelly, Coach Ingham here, and Coach Hopkey, this isn't something that just happened overnight. These guys have put a lot of time in it and miles and blood, sweat, and tears, so let's give it off for our wrestling team. At this time, I guess I'll turn it over to the board or anyone if there's any sentiments folks would like to say.
Wow, how's that? Way to go, guys. I was like, uh...
Yeah, it's very hard.
Thanks for making Amory look good.
Put us on the map for the second year in a row.
Three's a charm, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we got some guys that are looking to do some more damage individually and as a team here moving forward. So, special group. Again, guys, congratulations. As I always tell them, once a champion, you're always a champion, nobody can ever take that away from you. And I truly don't think they realize what they've accomplished, but in ten or fifteen years, when you're talking to them at a state wrestling event that they're out there watching, they'll probably be talking about their matches and whatnot. So, good stuff here, guys, thanks for coming in, appreciate the board acknowledging their accomplishments. Awesome season, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. I would like to do one picture with this just in the boardroom here, we'll get you guys out on Twitter here and tweet that on.
Someone's gotta pick that up.
Coach is in there?
Yeah, Coach is getting there a couple of minutes, yeah. You guys are there?
Yeah, there's lots of room back here.
Send the chair. The trophy does not currently fit in the trophy case, so Andy's our financial guy, so we're gonna have a conversation.
Nope, you're good.
All right. All right, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Probably fix my little car.
Back end box down.
Suppose you could take it to the shop and cut the top off to get it in there, you know? It'd be bad. Or just cut a hole in the case and stick it up out of there, all right. Great stuff. The next is consent agenda items, and I had that, so I will make a motion to accept those.
Second bet.
Aaron is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Community comments, do we have anyone signed up?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. All right, and then we'll move on to our administrative reports.
Okay, I have a statement I'd like to read and then I'm going to turn it over to Josh, so let me grab my statement here. One, two. Okay. In tomorrow's edition of the Amory Free Press, a letter has been submitted stating that the school district of Amory has not been accommodating and sharing financial information with a community member. Further, it is asserted the reason the district is going to referendum is a result of the excessive benefits received by Amory educators. Both accusations are untrue. Here are the facts. Every year, the district budget is published in the Free Press in the required format by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. In addition, the district holds a budget hearing open to the public, conducts an independent audit, publicly presents the audit, and posts the audit on their website. The district has followed these practices for decades. The narrative provided in the paper is riddled with inaccuracies and misrepresentations. The rambling presentation of district finances is at best uninformed and at worst dangerous. The takeaway is rather than go to referendum, the district should first strip district staff of all benefits, then reduce their salary, next use this freed-up money to pay for maintenance. The teacher shortages created by this plan would be unimaginable. The result would be the destruction of the high-quality education provided to Amory kids. Please know, the referendum is not about increasing the salary and benefits of staff in any way, it is about addressing the great many maintenance and space issues in our school district. There is nothing excessive about compensating Amory educators for the amazing work they do. Their service should be appreciated. To say anything else is to simply not value the education provided in the Amory schools. Contrary to what has been offered, Amory does not does an excellent job of educating kids. The district has exceeded expectations on the state report card in each of the seven years it has been published. Our teachers are a large reason why this is true. In recent weeks, other accusations have been made about the district by the author of this letter. The author has also accused the district of using graphic organizers to mine information from kids, just as the communists did to take control of China in nineteen forty-nine. Yes, you heard that correctly. The same person who is stating that the district is misrepresenting the truth is comparing the school district of Amory's treatment of kids to communists in nineteen forty-nine China. Further, the author has stated, "When I questioned the school about not showing the public the financial information, the school or teachers' union had the mafia after me. First, they tried to get me fired from my job. Second, they tried to tie up my internet and I called the internet provider and they put security in that blocked them. Third, when I attended school board meetings, they would surround my car and pickups with thugs to try and scare me. When I called the school and told them if they didn't stop, I would turn them into the FBI, they stopped their tactics." I'm not sure what else can be said about the school district using the Amory mafia to intimidate its community members. The Amory mafia? These accusations are utterly ridiculous and they make clear that the letter about district finances and the referendum, which has been submitted to this week's paper, should be seen exactly for what it is: complete nonsense. Simply stated, none of the accusations in this letter are true, including the myriad of inaccurate and misrepresented statements about district finances, staff benefits, and the referendum. To be clear, the district is going to referendum because it is debt-free and has buildings which have maintenance and space issues, not because of mismanaged finances. The referendum is about providing for the future of education in Amory. Our kids and community have always deserved the best, nothing will ever change that. Thank you. Mr. Gould, you're up.
Okay, happenings at the high school. Couple weeks ago, on March eighth, our juniors completed the ACT state assessment and most of the kids walked out of the building with a smile on their face, so we'll see in a couple of weeks. Mr. Fern talked about the individual state champions from wrestling. In addition, we had an individual state champion in powerlifting, Mitchell Gamash was a state champion, and we had a number of other kids do a great job as well. I've been talking to the past couple of months about some opportunities we've been getting through the University of Wisconsin River Falls called dual academic credit courses. And we've actually been able to grow that much faster than I had ever hoped, and we're developing a nice relationship with the River Falls professors. And it looks like we'll have four courses next year on our schedule that we'll be able to run that students have shown interest for. So, students will be able to get college-level credit in physics, statistics, a college prep English course which would replace a freshman-level writing or English course in college, and astronomy as well. And these are all courses that a number of our teachers were able to get certified in based on their master's degrees. So we're really excited about that and for our kids especially, the ability to take a course and pass it and not have to worry about a single test like you would with the AP, it's a really big deal. So we're excited and we expect these numbers to grow and flourish as well. Our world language crew is currently in Spain right now, but they were in France here a couple days ago. We've got a travel party of over thirty people that have been having a great time. I know there's links out there on social media if you want to check out some of the awesome pictures that exist, but they're having a great time. Future events, we do have, the vast majority of our spring sports are rolling along and as you can see from outside, there's less and less snow, so that at least gets our hopes up. March twenty-ninth, we'll be hosting the Large Group Music Contest here at Amory that gets rotated amongst the Upper Sankra Valley schools every year, and it's our turn. April fifth, our students will be participating in the solo ensemble at the Osceola School District. Friday, April first, is the end of our third term. April thirteenth, we have our ACT Aspire for our ninth and tenth graders, that's the second half of our state assessments. And on that same day, our juniors, current juniors, will be going on college tours, we're going on four different locations, they had to pick their choices, but we're sending a bus to Stout, a bus to UWRF, a bus to Northwood Tech, and a bus to Duluth, to UMD. And during those days, the kids will get tours, they're gonna get to eat in the food halls at these colleges and get to speak with some professors, so we're really excited about that, and we've got a number of teachers that are leading those tours. So, that's it from the high school.
Thank you.
All right, at the middle school, Mr. Gould talked about the music festivals, so we're excited to have our kids get into those competitions and the first one here coming in Amory. We have a lot of different things going on too that are pretty exciting. We just finished up our middle school Quiz Bowl, which is a sixth-grade competition, and we had a team of two boys and two girls that combined and won the competition in the sixth grade. We just finished our local middle school Battle of the Books competition, that's a statewide competition where the state issues a series of books that students can read and they have to be prepared to answer questions about the books. And to really accomplish it, teams have to pretty much split up books and have different kids read so they have them all covered, and then they have to answer questions on that. And we had a team of four sixth-grade boys that won the competition for Amory, which was really great, and they're gonna be going on to the state competition. Our middle school project-based learning is kicking off again, and I talked about this last month, but our Genius Hour program is happening. Students get approximately an hour now a week to work on their passion project, whatever they want to work on and research, and they'll be presenting those in May. Mr. Gould also talked about College Visit Day. College Visit Day, we used to go to college visits in eighth grade, we kind of have moved that up to the high school. Our students are going to be going to the All Skills Career Day in eighth grade, and we're real excited about that, is they go up to the Polk County Fairgrounds, it's hosted by the CISA schools, and they're going to get to learn just about everything from college reps out there, but also all the way down to, you know, driving forklifts and, you know, bricklaying to every career you can imagine, and they're gonna be out there for half a day just getting to experience and learn all about those great activities, so we're excited for that. And then our forward test is starting as well, our state test, the forward test at the middle school will be starting on April fifth, and it runs the fifth to the fourteenth many days. Any questions? Thanks.
Okay, at the intermediate school, the English Language Arts adoption with the elementary is still ongoing, Cheryl will update you on that. The IPO hosted Bingo March first, so thank you to our IPO for offering that, there was a lot of excitement and buzz the next day. Fourth graders welcomed in two guest speakers to talk about the Iditarod. It was two people from our community that have experience with the Iditarod and so shared different facts and different pictures and memorabilia, which was really exciting. Students then completed some history research and competed in an Iditar Read Challenge. They would log their hours for reading by dog sled team races, and they had to get to the end and then all the way back, so there was a lot of excitement to see that posted in the intermediate school hallway. Love your library event, our snow day, we made that up on March eighth here at the intermediate school library, it was very well-attended. We had about seventy people attend, they were able to just browse our library, grab different books. Mrs. Brighton was wonderful, so you could grab as many books as you want, find a comfy spot in the gym or in the library, read with your child, see what we have to offer. We had a couple book talks, Emery Doherty from the public library visited, she had some great resources, she did a book talk as well, and then Mrs. Brighton did a book talk too. And then we ended it with hot chocolate and sugar cookies. Following up on that, that same week, we bussed all classes in rotating times to the public library, so students by classroom went to the public library and got to see the new space. Amy, the youth director, had given tours, they were able to enjoy the Maker Space, just see the new space and really be able to enjoy it. And a big highlight for us is working with the library, we issued seventy new library cards just to intermediate students, so that was a really big win for us. School-wide celebration on March eleventh, so right before spring break, students watched a movie in the gym and had fresh-made popcorn by myself and Mr. M. And finally, we're working together with the elementary school to shift from a targeted title-wide program to a school-wide title program. We're gonna look at making that shift to next year, so we're just developing our action plan at this point. Lastly, Parent University is coming up, that's something that's on our calendar, so that takes place April second here at the intermediate school. So along with the school district of Amory and the mental health task of Polk County, we're hosting an event in which we're welcoming guest speakers to talk about different parenting topics. They can range from reading to maybe helping your child with any behaviors or trauma that they've experienced. That's April second here from eight-thirty to twelve-forty. I want to let people know that you register through Community Ed and that registration actually closes on Thursday. Some upcoming events, fourth grade made a trip to Z Orchard, actually it was today where they tapped maple syrup trees. Parent University is coming up, we also will be doing the Forward Exam here at the intermediate school, we're gonna be testing the second and third weeks of April. Fourth grade has an upcoming music concert with recorders, which is very exciting. And then fifth grade on the twenty-second will compete in a math master's competition in Hammond, as well as have a fifth-grade planetarium field trip visit. Any questions?
Hey, I have a question about the Title I, so right now it's a focused program, you said it'll be a school-wide program, what does that look like? What are the differences?
So, right now, being a targeted school program, we use data, and based on that data, we intervene with targeted interventions to students that have certain scores. A lot of that support looks like small group. Transitioning to a program wide Title I school, the supports look a little bit different. So we make school district goals, we work together a lot, we have a little more flexibility in how we provide those supports, so it could look like a title teacher going into a classroom and providing supports in that way, and it can benefit more students than just the student that has the identified need. Cheryl, do you have anything to add to that?
What happens is all teachers become a Title I teacher instead of being just designated Title I teachers, and so the support, as Jessica said, can be given to every classroom, not just a classroom that has Title I designated children. The other thing, it provides a lot of flexibility with movement of kids in and out as they progress, we can move them out and put other children in, so it's just a lot of flexibility. We are one of two districts in our CISA that are not Title I school-wide, and we kind of held on to the targeted because we were doing some of those things, being flexible anyway, and we just thought, well, let's just get it, let's get it done so that we have, we like the concept of all teachers being Title I teachers. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I wanted to report on our February parent-teacher conferences because I'm very proud that we had ninety-five percent of our parents in attendance, and as you are aware, we offer Zoom, phone, and in-person conferences, and in-person conferences were still the popular method of talking to your teacher. Sixty-five percent of our families chose that, twenty-two percent chose the telephone, and eleven percent chose Zoom. We love any opportunity we have to speak with our families, so we're happy that we offer all three choices for our families. It's so important that they get an opportunity to hear about the great things their kids are doing and how they can help their kids learn. Our Leon Elementary, our annual Leon Elementary School Carnival was on March fourth, and it was just such a huge success. At first, I thought I was gonna have to drag you back there, Ms. Erin, but wow, did the parents kick into gear, and it was so fabulous. And, you know, it's a very big event and it was very well-attended, I think it was the highest moneymaker we've ever had, I don't have that actual figure yet, but not that that's why we do it, we've always had the, we wanted to make sure that every child has an opportunity to attend the carnival, so we keep our prices low and we also give some scholarships to families that need them. But I really want to thank our Amory Queens Court for fair hair, Anchor Point Archery for bringing in, that's a huge, huge hit for our kids, our middle school students and high school students, the parents as partners who organize it all, and the Leon staff who all stayed on a Friday night, not all of them, but a lot of them, if they weren't there in person, they were there with their families, so it was just a great day. A new event we had this year was the Bouncy House, and I had no idea how popular that would be, and we used it during the day, so some of our kids got to use it during the day in Fayette, and they were so, they were just buzzing all over about the Bouncy House, so it was great. We had a lot of donations, families donated prizes, Power Up from Health Partners donated all of the food, and Dick's Market donated the water. And I want to say a shout-out to John McBride, our new Director of Food Service, he even showed up and he cooked the food, and on Monday morning, I always rushed into the kitchen to make sure that we left it, you know, that the cooks are okay, and he was there, he had come in and had cleaned everything that we, we thought, we cleaned everything, but anyway, it was a really, really good event, and I just really appreciated him for his coming in and protecting the elementary principal. So, in regard to the EL adoption, as you know, that our schools have been working really, really hard to learn about the programs, as you know, we're down to two programs. Next Monday, we are going to be visiting Lady Smith. Lady Smith has the program, the ARC program, which is, stands for American Reading Company, and it is, it's based on the science of reading, as Jessica has shared, so is Houghton-Mifflin, it's just how you define the science of reading, and we're looking for a program that is very explicit in teaching our students and that will provide a lot of support to our teachers in teaching reading. Because as you know, in any classroom, we have this, you know, this array of students from, could be kindergarten to fifth grade in one classroom, and that happens district-wide, but for reading, it's really important that we get explicit instruction. So that visit is this coming Monday, and we're looking, this next Monday, and we're looking very forward to hearing the Lady Smith teachers who are using the program. And their principal was very honest and said, you know what, they're gonna hear the good, the bad, and the difference. the good, the bad, and the, and the difference. So we'll see, we'll see. So March 31st then, so this will be the last board meeting that we talk about two programs. We hopefully will narrow it down to one. March 31st, Teresa Stanley is going to come in. She's from CISA 11, and she's going to review with all of our staff. We're going to do rotating subs, and she's going to review all the work that we've done over the past year, talk about our vision statement, our adoption rubric, and talk about the pros and cons of each of the programs. And then at the end of that hour, we anticipate that every grade level will have about an hour with her, then they will actually vote for the program of their choice. So all teachers will have that option to vote. An important date for families is Monday, April 18th. All program option forms are due at the elementary school. So that's if you're requesting Montessori, PBL, or legacy learning environments, and it's also an opportunity for families to give us who they would like for a teacher, a couple options for a teacher. We have started at the elementary school visits for families today. I think we had three families come in and actually observe different classrooms. And if you are a parent and you do not know what, you know, Montessori, PBL, what's the difference, we offer families the opportunity to come in and actually view those programs and play, and it's a very good option. And I thank the elementary teachers for opening their classrooms because that can be a little bit stressful. The next big date is this Thursday. We have report cards going home at the elementary school, so. Any questions? Thank you.
And no further? Then, then we'll go to our AGR performance report.
Oh, you get to have Jessica on eye again.
That's right. No rest.
So AGR stands for Achievement Gap Reduction, and basically it's extra money that is provided by the state if we follow certain rules. And you have seen this type of report before, and boy, that comes off really tiny, doesn't it? I'm sorry about that. There's a lot that we have to report on with this. So if you went from left to right, I'm not going to read everything, but I'm going to start out by, we have to report on reading and on math. And the first set here is reading, and I'm going to explain the template and then we'll just go through each page. So the goal is to have our students above, 80% of our students above the 30th percentile. We use the FastBridge assessment to measure this three times a year. We have to designate what AGR strategies we are using, and basically we are using class size reduction, so our class sizes are 18 and lower, or if they're not 18 and lower, we have small group instruction and/or both. And then the rationale just talks about why we use class size reduction and small group instruction, and it's basically to, to keep our kids engaged and to be able to provide, increase student engagement and provide an opportunity for targeted skills to be taught for our students. And then what we have to report to you is the percent of kids and the number of kids that have met the goal. And this is from the fall, and then we'll report again in the spring. So the numbers here, 84%, this is kindergarten reading, 84% of our students were at or above the 30th percentile, which is quite high, given with COVID, the average decrease in scores was 10 to 12% statewide. So 84% were at or above the 30th percentile, which is 66 students meeting the objective. And then the last column just is what was our response to COVID? The state wanted to know, okay, what did you do to help provide support to your students? And the first paragraph talks about our, our technology that was used to deliver instruction. The second paragraph talks about the Board of Education and Administration, the commitment to in-person learning. And then the third paragraph just talks about the, the FastBridge benchmark assessment. So, which is our assessment to monitor our kids and then progress monitor once we have the data. So that's the first page. You'll see the same page over and over again, only with different grades and/or subjects. So the second screen is math, and in math, we had 77% at kindergarten, 77% at or above the 30th percentile, which was 60 students. The next slide is first grade reading. First grade reading, we had 57% of our students at or above the 30th percentile, 50 students meeting the objective. And then the next slide is math. First grade, where 78% were at or above the 30th percentile, 68 students meeting the objective. And then the next slide is second grade, and it is second grade reading. 62% were above, at or above the 30th percentile, which is 72 students meeting the objective. And then second grade math is the next slide, which is 68% were at or above the 30th percentile, 80 students meeting the objective. So you can see, we have a ways to go in some grade levels to get to where we want to be in the spring. Again, the goal being 80% of our students, 30%, 80%. Now I'm, now I'm messing this up. 80% of the students at or above the 30th percentile. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jessica, who's going to report on our third grade students.
So I apologize, my slide is even smaller because I tried to fit it on one slide. The top, the top is the reading portion. So in third grade, 62% of our students are at or above the 30th percentile, which is a total of 49 students meeting the objective. In math, 70% of third graders are at or above the 30th percentile, which is 55 students meeting the objective. And similar to the elementary, this is also our fall benchmark from FastBridge.
We always see our fall scores typically lower than our spring scores. And then I just, I guess I'm kind of curious, how did this fall compare to falls that we've seen previously? How much lower were they, or if we're right in the same ballpark? Because I know usually we're, by spring, we're very, very close to that 80th, the 80%, getting above that, getting at or above that 30th percentile. We're either there or we're just, just fall a little short. So how, how did it look this fall compared to others?
Kindergarten looked high, which was surprising to me in reading and math. Reading, math, we, we feel like we have a really solid math program. Houghton Mifflin expressions is our math program. So you'll, if you go through that packet, you'll see that math is higher. First and second grade were lower, definitely, in reading for sure. So I don't think we saw a 10% decrease in scores like the state did, but we definitely saw a decrease in scores. And we're, I think we're still feeling it, even with, you know, our incoming 4K class is, is, is challenging, so.
And I would echo Cheryl's thoughts. When I had looked through what we had historically, this is a bit lower than what we usually see in the fall. And again, math is always a little bit stronger in scores for us. And then, you know, this, so this third grade group was first, first graders when COVID initially hit. And, you know, even looking back to that first grade year, they make the most gains in the spring, and so when they went home in March, I think we're still feeling a lot of that. The second graders that we're talking about, those were, were kindergartners at that time.
Yeah. And I, since I've been on the board too, I mean, we've always had a, we've seen a little bit of a shift too, because that focus kind of got redirected. We were very, very strong reading way, way back, and then we kind of, we were kind of falling short in the math, so we really bumped up the math instruction and then we, so we, we got those numbers to come along and then kind of fell back in the reading a little bit. So I know we've, we've had that discussion a few years ago, so this isn't entirely new, but obviously now trying to bolster back up the reading and then with having the COVID hit, that, that was a, that was a huge issue too, so.
And the, the decision that we are making in next week is a big decision. It's huge, and that's why we've done a lot to make sure our teachers are comfortable with, in piloting it and learning about it, and, and hopefully it will make the right decision as moving forward. The other thing is we haven't just sat idle. You know, our curriculum cycle is 10, 10 years. And so our reading curriculum is older than what we would like to see, but that doesn't mean that we let it be that way. So we have done other things. We really focused on the foundational skills and we've purchased Hegarty to, to beef up the phonics and phonemic awareness. And so we've done some things to definitely help with that. But yeah, all in all, we, we would, we're hoping to see that we can get those reading scores where we want them to be.
I think that's, it's important too, that you had touched on that, that, that there was a program that you guys had implemented to teach phonemic awareness so that kids are learning how to sound out words and not, rather than just reading whole words and trying to figure those things out by just the context of what's surrounding them. So it's still the old school emphasis of, of learning how to sound out those words and, which was really the setback that we saw with COVID, because those kids didn't learn those differences between the hard and soft consonances and, and long and soft vowels and how to sound those things out, so.
And you know, the, also the, the philosophy of how to teach reading has really changed over the past 10 years. And that's where that foundational piece just came in last year with the, the Wisconsin State, the new standards, that it was really a big push to go back to the phonics, which is the science of reading, is it? So, so it's, it's interesting where, but we're.
And another tool we have is FastBridge. When we, when we screen our students, FastBridge is a great tool in that it actually has a prescriptive intervention, and it is based on the foundational skills. So if you have a class that's deficient in one foundational skill, it can be a whole class intervention and you can use that during part of your reading block, or if it's, you know, a student that's significantly low in a foundation skill, that's where you could use that in your small group instruction. So we definitely have found resources that are helping us achieve those foundational skills.
Thanks for the continued effort of, you know, keeping going with that and not just day-to-day and let the, let the same old, same old be the same old, same old, because we know that's not good for anybody, so good job.
With that, we'll go with our informational items.
All right, the first informational item is the election information and first grade poll is the election is to release tomorrow, April 5th, 2022. Am I right?
Are we looking at the ballot?
Specific, there's the ballots, the ballot, I should say, and then the referendum questions that you'll see there, the resolution number one and resolution number two. This is not going to relabor the point by reading each virtue, but that's what it'll look like. And then lastly, voting early, March 22nd through April 1st, and then polling on Election Day, April 5th at George Con Hall between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. And that information is pretty widely available for folks if they want to have access to it.
Very good. Next, we'll move to our action items, and the first will be the ESER expenditures, ESER 3 expenditures.
ESER 3. Timelines on this whole thing haven't really been the friendliest for board meetings and what things are doing so far. Andy and I technically had to submit the ESER 3 application on March 11th because that was the due date. But the good news is you can always do a budget adjustment and make a change. It isn't set in stone, but it has been submitted because we had to make sure we had it in by the 11th. So some of what you're going to see here is similar to what you've seen in the past. ESER allocations, there's been multiple rounds of ESER. We've seen this slide before. ESER stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. There are four, three ESER allocations in two rounds for the second. So you'll see the first ESER allocation was used to pay clubhouse childcare staff. We could have used that money for a variety of things. We could have paid any employee group, we simply chose to pay clubhouse. It could have been anybody. So the amount was $135,017. The second round of ESER, there were two rounds, the grand total of $848,679, used to pay for the HVAC system at the elementary school. That timeline actually lent itself pretty well because it happened at the time when we were heading into summer and we had the access to the building, though it was pretty warm in, in the building in the summer. So that was spent on the HVAC system. ESER 3 was $1,229,433. And here's where we get some new information. We have a couple more slides and then the new information. Must spend that money by September 30th of 2024, so we can make changes between now and then. Emphasis on addressing and assessing learning loss. Any activities must be in recognition of issues that were created by the COVID pandemic. Engagement, students, families, school and district administrators, teachers, principals, school leaders, other educators, school staff and/or unions. The timeline on ESER 3 is the approval from the state. That took a while to have happen because they were waiting for the Department of Education to get it done. The Department of Education weighed in, so the state then approved. Application window opened on the 6th of December, and then we had until March 11th to get it done. So what have we declared as our expenditures? What we have declared on these two items, and there's a change on this slide. The addition of a third grade teacher, so the present second grade has demonstrated academic need, so that would be next year's third grade. We would reduce those class sizes and offer greater resource, not the least of which would be pushing on title services for those kids. And rather than an additional high school teacher, we simply didn't have the numbers, as in the number of kids, to justify the move of adding a math teacher. We simply wouldn't have enough people in a classroom to justify the addition of a teacher. We decided to add a kindergarten teacher as well. In Cheryl's presentation during administrative reports, she noted it's been challenging. Our 4K population presently, who will become kindergartners next year, and I can't imagine a worse time for having been four and five years old than the last two years of COVID. There hasn't been a lot of normalcy in your home, and then your first year of school's been fairly abnormal as well. So adding a kindergarten teacher will allow us to reduce those class sizes and offer greater service to those kids as well. So those are the two staff additions. You'll see the monetary values. We can't say exactly that that's the amount of money, because we haven't hired the people yet, but the estimation is what you see here for these total amounts. Remember, these are two-year totals. It's not a one-year salary of $90,000, but rather a $45,000. It's two years. So then you get your totals there.
And that's two years of benefits also?
Correct. Two years for each of those individuals. Questions on, other questions on staff additions, I'd be happy to help with.
That would adjust based on who we hire and their level of experience and all of that, where they fall on the, where they fall on our.
We just don't know. That's our estimation at this point, because we haven't even posted the job yet.
So we're looking at hiring a kindergarten teacher for, for next year? And which would help address those kids that we've identified really in that 4K? So, and which is understandable for this year because we, or for the next year because we've identified those for this year. Then what happens? Would that kindergarten be able to, teacher be able to move to first grade? Is those students move to first grade? Or do we need to just look at that depending on learning loss that we see coming in? But are they mobile? Do we have to keep them specifically as a kindergarten teacher through the next couple of years?
We don't. And Cheryl and I meet all the time on staffing. Staffing at the elementary and intermediate school is a moving target by grade level, constantly.
Right.
It's where the need is.
Right.
And we added a second grade teacher for this year because we had a need in the number of kids.
Right.
And wherever the need is, is where the teachers are going to go.
I just wanted to make sure that was okay with the grant money, that we can have that flexibility to do that.
You just have to submit a budget adjustment to make that clear.
Okay.
Any other questions about staff additions?
And Josh, we talked quite a bit about a math, adding a math teacher.
Yeah, so we, we got done surveying our students in late February, and as I was plugging in the data, looking at the numbers, actually what, what was kind of lower was our upper level, level, science class numbers were a little bit lower than they'd been in the past, which allowed us to shift Sam Bosley, who has dual credit math and science, into more into the math realm. So we were able to reduce some of our algebra sizes, which was the target group we had, so I. So I called up Dr. Dershowitz and said, hey, I've, I've been running the numbers here. I think, I think we can make this go with what we have for our current staff right now.
So, but are we still looking at making that algebra specifically or pre-algebra, both of them?
Skinny year long. Yep, yep.
Good, thank you.
That's awesome. Thanks for shifting things around, and that frees up money to add in something else where it's going to be a major, I mean, not that the math isn't a major impact, but it is a major impact to get these kids up to where they need to be. To, before they get to you, I guess, at the high school as well.
And it's, we're still going to be able to offer more sections of math next year than we were going to be able to, you know. And I, I wouldn't even say it's at the cost of science, simply because some of the upper level classes that we aren't going to run next year, just given the, the interest in them, kind of allowed that shift to happen for us, so.
Yeah, and then, and obviously then you're having the, the addition of the four, the upper level um statistics class, the upper level physics class, which is upper level science, which is going to be that.
It's getting a lot of traction, a lot of excitement from the kids, so. And, and who knows, you know, next year, it could be totally the opposite, where we don't have the interest level in the upper level math classes, but it could go back to the upper level science classes, so. And, and, and I, I really do have to applaud Sam Bosley, and Sean can attest to this. You know, having that dual licensure, he's really been the swing man for years and years. And some years, he's seventy-five, eighty percent math and twenty percent science. This year, he was eighty-five percent science, fifteen percent math, and he's so flexible. He's such an outstanding teacher and his willingness to go back and forth to help kids. So um his flexibility has allowed us to do the shifting around.
I was just going to say the same thing, uh Mr. Gold, that, you know, thanks for them, for the, you know, the teachers up there that's willing to shift things around and for Sam especially, that having that dual licensure is really a, uh, an ace in the hole for our district. I mean, and he's been here a long time.
He has.
I've seen him in all capacities, like doing the math and the science. I've had kids go through all of his classes, and he's really a gem up there.
Well, the conversation I'm having with all of our young prospective teachers as they're going into the field now, get two certifications. You, you can pick and choose where you want to go if you can figure out two certifications and make it work.
Well, the way the teacher shortages are going, even with one certification, you can pick and choose where you want to go.
You are correct.
Nice try. Thank you.
So the next slide um articulates summer school staff. One percent of money needs to be spent on summer school staff. So we'll pay our summer school coordinator and our summer school instructors during that time.
Which we were already paying.
We're already paying, we're paying for.
Now we'll use ESER dollars instead of budget dollars.
Correct.
Because we have to.
Simply paid from a different source.
Yeah.
District technology and infrastructure.
Sorry, one more question on the previous page. Why does it say, like, two teacher salaries for August session? Are we only offering two session or two teachers?
That's simply what we needed to get to the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Of the one percent, okay.
It could be all teachers if we wanted it to be.
Okay.
I mean, the budget submission is so flexible, you simply have to meet your targets and not go over your grand total.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
A good question. District technology and infrastructure, cybersecurity upgrades provided for a safer learning environment, both in-person and virtual. So this is to protect us from the outside entities that exist in regards to cybersecurity. This is a big issue. Districts have been shut down, literally, all of their technologies have been shut down uh in recent years, particularly over the last six months. So that's something we're going to do and use this money to do it. And then lastly, um we're going to use a slice of this money to pay for new staff laptops. This is the remaining cost after using the emergency connectivity fund. Remember that we got these devices at a reduced cost. Clint working with E-Rate in order to make that happen, and we went with new staff devices. People are receiving them here in the last couple of weeks. And we went off script in regards to the rotation, because we got them at a greatly reduced cost for the same device. So it was an opportunity that we chose not to pass, because it was a huge cost savings.
So with the cybersecurity upgrades, is that, is that like some kind of a company that we hire? Or is this technology, like, systems that we're buying?
What you're going to see uh in the next couple of months are the vendors that are going to bid on that very thing.
Okay, okay.
Clint's got that all organized.
Okay.
So we simply needed this to be done before we brought that. And then lastly, maintenance, uh middle school heat pumps. Now, this is very contingent on whether we pass the referendum or not. We perhaps could use referendum dollars for this. It's in, it's on the list, and that would be my recommendation. Or if that fails, we can do it through these dollars. Either way, we have to replace the middle school heat pumps. Again, we've got seventy-two of them, and we've had about twenty fail in the last year. So that's not going to work long-term. So it's a matter of what happens on April fifth for that. And then the elementary school boilers, replace inefficient boilers, improve ventilation and air quality. So that would be an expense through there as well.
So if we, if the referendum passes and we don't need to use the heat pump, we just have to reallocate these dollars?
Yep, you have to do a budget submission, an adjustment for six hundred and ninety-eight thousand. If that's what you choose to do, we simply don't know what's going to happen in fifteen days.
I think we talked about that last meeting as well.
And I would anticipate, like, all the other grants that I do, and, and I, and I handle that, would have probably multiple revisions to the budget, just based on what's going on two years from now. So, or even two months from now, just because uh, the biggest thing is to wait for them to approve the budget and then move on to, to uh what we need to do.
So would we discuss where that money would be spent if we are not using that money for the heat pumps?
That would be an April meeting, and that's what we need to do. And I'm, and I'm hopeful that we can do this work, the middle school heat pumps, do the referendum. Is this money can then be used in a different way?
Answering any budget revisions there are, we posted, and we will discuss them at meetings and things, so. Uh that's one thing that's required. Um if you remember back when we were talking about ESER, that we had to have a plan and review it so often, and to be part of that, so.
So, uh we.
You need to make a motion if you wanted to approve like the representative here.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ESER three expenditures.
All right, and a second?
Second. Go ahead, Chelsea.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, no. There we go. Then we get to talk about the heat pumps.
Well, again, the timelines don't always uh line up well. Um we've got a twelve to fourteen week uh wait in order to, from the moment you approve a bid, to get someone in-house to do that. That's the estimate. It could be longer. We have to do this work during the summer, when the kids and staff are not there. So we have got to get this locked in. So we already went to bid. These are the two bids that we received. Um you'll see three columns, the bid itself from the company, Harris, and then KBK, who was out of Ashland. For full disclosure on that, there's their bid amount for the middle school heat pump project, the LHB. These are design fees. The reason the design fee is higher for KBK is because what KBK is seeking to do is to solve the issue is uh a little bit more grandiose. And further, there's no existing relationship between LHB and K, and KBK. The bid is with Harris. Harris is the outfit that did the um work at the elementary school. So you add those two together and you get a total in your far right. So the difference is six hundred and ninety, ninety-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. And then the other is one million, fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and two. My recommendation is to go with Harris, not only our bid and the bonus amount, but they also did a stellar job in addressing the elementary issue. But that, of course, is your call.
I'm not sure that's really.
Not what you call, it's technical.
Not really much of an argument there.
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the bid with uh Harris.
Harris, same.
With Harris, uh second?
Second. Let's get it on the books.
Uh all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay. Next, we'll review our COVID nineteen plan.
All right, what you see here are updated numbers in regards to COVID in the district, school district of Amory. The first slide you have is COVID numbers between February twenty-sixth and March fourth. Total number in district, total number staff and students. As you see, their numbers are marked in the views. We have one student case during that timeframe. And then just prior to spring break, we had a total of two cases, two staff and zero students during that timeframe. Um on the subsequent slide, you'll see from September first through the present, which is the beginning of the year, through the Friday before spring break, the total number of staff, students, and then the grand total percentages. And again, most of those numbers are from days prior to the recent month, with a, a pretty large spike in the month of January. So perhaps out in the woods, I don't know anything for certain, but right now we're doing pretty well. And then there's the learning model transition plan. We haven't had to do anything like that. And that's a August of twenty twenty-one product, and we're in the green, and that's safe there.
Enough said.
Yeah, it's working.
Done.
Good. You're up, Josh, with the Start College Now. I thought you had your degree.
Yeah. All right, so I'm here to request that you guys approve. We currently have six students who are looking at um either early college credit program um or the Start College Now program. This is the stat, state mandated program. Um these students have all declared some intention, some interest in some classes. However, they want to wait until after they've scheduled, um after they've seen the master schedule, what classes are out there. But they have backup plans, so I would just ask that you approve them.
Make a motion that we approve?
Erin, and a second?
Second.
Dale, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. There we go. Next is the fun one, donations to the district.
All right, donations to the district. We have a generous community, by all means. Congregational Church uh made some homemade goodies that were provided as thank yous to our staff. They didn't make it to the district office. Guess I gotta get to the lounge.
Yeah, I was going to say.
You gotta get to the lounge, really bad, I know.
Probably didn't let you know.
Our Savior's Lutheran Church, uh donation of fifty dollars to the Angel Fund. Uh Jennifer Hatch made a two hundred and fifty dollar donation to the Amory IPO. Johnson Motors, thank you for the donation to support the chess team as they travel to Memphis, Tennessee for uh chess nationals. And then from the elementary school carnival, thank you to the elementary school families who donated prizes. Power Up and Health Partners for donating the food, Dick's Market for donating the water, and Anchor Point, Amory Court, middle and high school students and lean staff and parents for volunteering. Wouldn't have done this without you, having been there. That is very true. And I did spend a great deal of time at the Bouncy House. I wasn't in it, but watching. I had a good conversation with Jean Meyer during that process. That was always fun.
Yep.
So, yes.
He must have been manning the Bouncy House.
Uh Jean was, he was in charge of the Bouncy House.
Still a little picture.
Doctor gets that.
Yeah.
Here, I, it's a good job. Good job.
He really had fun.
Everybody's having fun. That's the main thing.
With many things, I make a motion that we accept the donations.
And we have a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, Shar, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Donations again, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's exciting to see it. Next, we'll have our personnel action.
Okay, personnel. We have new employee and athletic contracts for Levi Bussi for varsity boys tennis. Stephanie Crawford in an early childhood special ed teacher. Amber Glazer is a special ed teacher. Kevin Olson, JV boys tennis coach. Custodians William Wishard and Dominic Williquet. Resig, reassignment, sorry, not resignation. Was in the room. Special ed teacher moving to elementary school principal, those are different words.
Yes.
Uh resignation, uh Jeff Green in custodial, and retirements for Kay Swanson and Lisa Rillo. And I have an item from each. And this apparently is Kay's official very first poem that she's ever written. But I think she did fantastic. So here we go, because this is about her retirement. I'm going to retire as I'm getting older. In the winters, I feel I'm getting colder and colder, for true. I'm ready to retire, that I do know. No more standing outside in the cold and snow. More time for my family, grandkids, and fun, more time for camping and relaxing in the sun. Hats off to you all, you all are the best. But I'm staying home to get a little more rest. Now that I've told you about my future fun, I'm here to tell you officially that June third, I am done.
That's good.
That was good.
Yeah.
Very creative. She's been so great here at this school, so.
Yeah.
And then Lisa Rillo. Uh Lisa has been in education for twenty-eight and a half years, sixteen and a half here. Three years at Mount uh S- Scenario, that's how you say it, I believe, college in Ladysman. Five years as a sub in Chitac. I believe, and I might have this wrong, I think Lisa was actually my very first hire when I was at the high school. So apparently I need to retire as well.
I know.
Yeah, right.
Uh number of years in Amory, sixteen and a half. Favorite memories? Lisa has got a lot. So I'll share with you the highlights from uh what she has shared with me. Uh student council advisory, advisor for nine years. Uh during her first ten-month period, had to deal with a lot of tragedy, and they were instrumental in helping us get through that. Uh coming up with the Student Council Memorial Scholarship in memory and celebration of the classmates. Uh helping be a part of many service projects as student council advisor. Loved mentoring students and creative writing and speaking. And loved to celebrate when their writing or speeches have been accepted, publication, and awards. Oftentimes, learning experiences that teach us to be humble, and one in particular for me, um was fairly early in my teaching, for instance, Lisa's how she shared. It was time for the FFAs, Donkey Ball fundraiser event, and they needed more riders. I hadn't seen such an event. They needed help, and I thought it might be fun, obviously not knowing what I was getting myself into. I, I agreed to help out. I volunteered to ride. The warnings they gave us as we saddled up should perhaps have caused me to pause. In the middle of the game, when my donkey abruptly dodged, then stopped, and I did not. My resulting fall from the saddle and the loud crack of hilarity from, to the floor caused some of the loudest applause of the event. The next day, as I was trying unsuccessfully not to limp in pain from the dark purple four-inch hematoma above my right front hip bone, one of the students enthusiastically approached me. Mrs. Rillo, she started, yesterday, when you fell off your donkey, that was the funniest thing I've ever seen. By the way, not for her. So that was one of her favorite memories. Treasure the opportunities to bring the students on field trips to see live theater. The opportunity for honors in AP literature, composition classes. Uh learning new techniques, multiple uh technologies, new perspectives. Continuously awed by the enormous and often otherwise hidden talents of our students and teachers as they performed at Snow Week talent shows and homecoming performances. Grateful for the assistance from my colleagues, administrators, support staff, and many opportunities I've had here in the Amory School District. We have had a history of turning challenges into opportunities over and over again during my years with the Amory School District, and I know that will continue. Thank you for your support, for many opportunities, for so many fun memories, and for your good wishes. So Lisa and Kay heading off into retirement.
Two good ones.
Yep. We only retire good ones, don't we?
We do. Seems like it.
Yes. Uh a motion to accept personnel.
I'll make a motion we approve or accept the personnel.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, no. There we go. And we don't have a need to close session, so I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Erin?
Second.
And Chelsea, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We're done. Thank you so much.